All right, I just saw an open session here. The Select Board just finished executive session. So we're gonna reconvene in five minutes at 7:40 to pick up on the open session agenda. So some of our legal discussions became extended, so I apologize. But we'll be back with you and start open session of the Select Board at 7:40 PM. Thank you. All right, welcome everybody to Sherburne Select Board meeting on June 13th, 2024. We're now gonna start the open session of our agenda tonight. And I'd like to ask Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I get through reading the agenda, the Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda as presented. I have not had any requests for public comments tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the reorganization of the Select Board. Item number two is request to use $25,000 from the surplus fund account to supplement a grant to purchase new electronic control weapon, which is a taser. Chief Tom, Chief Galvin is here for that, oh boy. Item number three is the 350th celebration update and acceptance of grant for Middlesex Savings. Mary Moore, Abby Fisk, and Heidi Doyle may be here to make that presentation. Item number four is a consideration of various boards and committee annual appointments. I'll speak on that one. Item number five is a consideration of request for the use of opera funds by Jeremy Marsette. Item number six is consideration of a housing consultant. Item number seven is Select Board meeting policy discussion with Jeremy Marsette. Item number eight is acceptance, housekeeping changes to the Select Board regulations for classification project Jackie Morris Town. We'll talk to that. Item number nine is the consideration of raising the senior tax credit allowance of $1,000 to $1,500 annually. Item number 10 is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, draft minutes of May 16th, 2024, and the designation of Town Administrator Jerry Marsette as the ADA coordinator. Item number 11 is Select Board reports. And item number 12 is Town Administrator reports with an update on the Washington Maple Street construction and the FY25 Boston MPO Transportation Improvement Plan.
That's a mouthful Diane, good job. Do I have any revisions or suggested changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote Eric?
I.
Steven?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Paul? Not sure if he's back yet, but.
Might not be back yet, but.
I'm I as well. And I'm Benosia Diane, I'm gonna make a brief public service announcement and I neglected to tell her. And that is that one of our, I'm still the Chair of the Boy Scout troop in town. And one of our scouts just completed two benches for the Farm Pond project that he did with the troop to build benches that will, I believe they've already been installed in the beach or will be shortly. So wanna thank Willie O'Neal was the Eagle Scout who, who and a whole crew of boys helped him build those benches. And they're made out of cedar, they're super, super benches. So wanna thank him. So we're on to reorganization of the board. First thing I wanted to do was thank the town and the Select Board for being crazy enough to have me be Chair of the Select Board. And I've been honored to serve in this role and certainly enjoy working with the team. And all the town employees are terrific. And so I would like to start off the topic by nominating Eric Johnson to be the next Chair of the Select Board. Do I have a second for my motion?
A second.
All right, is there any discussion before we vote? All right. Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Hi.
And I am I as well. We'll let you not vote on yourself Eric.
Thank you. And actually, if it's okay, I would like to make the next motion. I would like to move that Steven Si serve as the Vice Chair.
Well, second, Paul seconded it. We'll do a roll call on that, then also Eric?
I.
Marion?
Hi.
Hi.
I am I as well.
Oh, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Jeff Waldron as Clerk of the Select Board.
One of my duties will be determine what the clerk actually does. There is a few documents that the clerk has to sign. So is there a second? All right, roll call Eric?
I.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Hi.
Right. And I didn't vote on that one, and now I officially hand the virtual gavel over to Mr. Johnson, Herr Johnson.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much Jeff. Okay, as I move right on to the agenda, item number two, request to use $25,000 from the surplus fund account to supplement grant to purchase new electronic control weapon, AKA taser. Chief Tom Galvin.
Thank you. So several months ago, you accepted a grant that we received for $40,035 towards the purchase of new tasers. What the town has done in the past with the purchase was they, sorry, is they, they had, they paid basically over five years. So we come up a little short with the $40,000 grant. We didn't get everything we had asked for. So what I'm asking for is $25,000 out of our surplus equipment account to cover that. If that doesn't happen, what would happen is beginning in FY26, we would have an additional $6250 that would be added on to our annual request for expenses. So what I'm doing is just looking to offset that, so we're not adding to those, those expenses. Currently, the surplus equipment account for the police has a balance of $34,791 and change. And we did actually add to the account this year over $26,000. So what I'm asking is to utilize $25,000 of that to offset the spending, the future spending.
So does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, Paul?
What is this surplus fund? I have, but didn't realize there was a surplus fund. Is this the fund that comes from the sale of equipment?
Correct.
Possession of equipment?
Yes.
Okay, I think it has a different name than the surplus fund. It's a.
I think, I thought I put in the motion sale of surplus police equipment. I may have titled it wrong, I apologize.
Okay, but that's the motion that I wanna make. I'm in favor of this.
I think on, I can, I think from Diane's spreadsheet, or Dad, sorry, Deb's spreadsheet that she gives us, it says sale of surplus equipment.
Okay, so can I make a motion or should we?
Um, is there any other questions or discussion about this? Okay, seeing that, yeah, Paul, please, please make a motion.
So I move to authorize $25,000 of funds from the sale of surplus police equipment to supplement the $40,035 grant from the purchase of new electronic control weapon taser. I think that should be for the purchase of new electronic control weapon.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, Jeff?
Right.
Um, Steven?
Hi, sorry.
Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
Okay, I am I as well. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number three, 350th celebration update and acceptance of grant for Middlesex Savings. I believe Mary Moore, Abby Fisk, and Heidi Doyle, some combination thereof is here to speak about this. Is it you, Mary?
You're muted, Mary.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks Eric. I'm gonna share some slides if that's okay?
Please.
Great. And I believe Heidi is on the call as well. Abby is not on the call, but we just wanted to give you guys an update on the 350th. Can you see that? Okay?
Yep.
Great. So it's been a terrific first half. We are feeling like we're really on track. I wanted to just give a few highlights about some community outreach and PR that we've been doing. Talk a little bit about some of the recent upcoming events. Quick snapshot of the fundraising and budget, and then a thank you, and hopefully an approval of the Middlesex Grant that we just received last week. But the highlight here is really there's plenty to do in the second half of the year. Lots of ways to get involved and to celebrate Sherburne. If you're not aware, we have a great website. It's sherburne350.org. We also have an Instagram page and a Facebook page where we've been posting regular updates. We've had a lot of social media engagement and a special thanks to Abby Fisk, who's been spearheading a lot of the social media postings, as well as our web intern Nihah, who is a Dover Sherburne rising senior. So thank you very much to those guys for all their terrific work. And if you haven't checked out the website, you should. We've got, we've had two quarterly newsletters that have gone out so far, mail to all residents. The next ones will come out in July and September. We're really grateful for all the terrific event highlights that we can sponsor in these. And we've gotten very, very good feedback from residents that they're happy to see these in their mailboxes. And I think it's been a good way to, you know, get the word out. This is from the website. I just did a little clip, but you can see all of the recent events. You can click on anything that's green on the website, go to photos, check out the past events. And then you can see all the upcoming events that we've already got queued up for the, for the second half. And I will note that there is a rededication of the David Doring Nature Trail on Saturday, the 15th. This weekend, there's also a Sherburne Off-Road and On-Road Walks Trail talk that's happening. And I think that's it for this weekend. The summer concert series at the library starts next week. Oh, the other thing for this weekend is that the Sherburne Yacht Club opens. So if you haven't signed up for your membership, now is a good time to do that. Finally, I just wanna highlight two big events. This is really our culmination event. We've got the Sherburne 350th Parade. Thank you very much to Chief Ward and the Sherburne Fire and Rescue Association for their willingness to sponsor this. And also Sherbstock, which is a big afternoon of bands over at Jamison Field. Thank you, Melinda O'Neal. I think you're on the call, so thank you for your leadership on this. Kevin Delaney, Darren Buck, Lindy Moch, those are just a few of the folks who've raised their hands and have really helped get this event off the ground. We are hoping for pre-sale tickets to go on sale starting in July. And if we can raise a little bit more money, then we can make those ticket prices lower as we move forward. Heidi, feel free to jump in on this, but we, we've been doing some really good fundraising. We've been tracking our expenses and the budget carefully. The, you can see we've raised 46,000 so far. We've spent about 28. We've got a balance of about 17 and a half, which is ironically exactly the amount of money that the state clawed back when they took back the 35, half of the $35,000 grant that we got. So we are expecting a little bit of a deficit, and we're gonna continue to try to raise additional funds between now and the end of the year to keep events free or low cost. Any questions on this or anything you wanna add on this, Heidi?
No, I think you covered it beautifully.
Okay. So finally, really big huge thank you to all the sponsors, donors, supporters. We do have a webpage with private donors who've, who've, who've made, you know, donations listed on the website. And we have event sponsors and Middlesex just gave us a $10,000 grant, so we're very grateful for that. Adessa Sherburne Business Association, Sherburne Fund, Mass Cultural Council. I just got word we're, we'll be getting a donation from the Lions Club. And there've been, you know, donate, private donations coming in each week. And I thank Elizabeth Laracy and Pam Douse for keeping track of that for us. So I think the next action item here is to get you guys to accept the grant that was sent to the town last week. Is that right, Heidi?
Yes, so I was going to propose that there be a motion to accept $10,000 from the Middlesex Savings Bank per the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A for the Sherburne 350th Celebration.
So I have a question on that.
Sure.
Go ahead, Paul.
The state has adopted a special statute for handling funds for these kinds of celebrations. Did, have we adopted that statute?
I don't believe we did. I think we just created a special fund. As a reserve fund, when we did the initial 10,000 free cash, I don't think we have a special celebration fund. We'll have to go back and look at the votes.
So there is a statute that says how you're supposed to be doing this. Cause I wanna include in the motion where this money is going. So it's, it's going into right now a reserve, a special reserve fund.
Correct. I don't know if Deb Seepings on the call, maybe not.
I, I am on the call, Heidi. It's going into a revolving fund right now.
So, so it is the statutory revolving fund?
Yes. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we ever adopted it, but that's what we set up and that's how we've been handling it.
Okay, so what, what's the name of the revolving fund?
The Sherburne 350th Celebration Fund.
Okay, and the other I was gonna make a comment about the the Doring Trail. As part of the, the materials, you mentioned it's gonna be this, this event on, on Saturday. And somewhere in some of these materials, I've read the story of the the Doring Child and what happened to them. And it was very moving to read it. And I'm not sure how many people in this town know that story. And I, I hope it gets retold many times in, in memory of that family. And, and what they, what's been done for this, this memorial trail? So I'm hoping in, at this event, that that will be discussed. And I hope that that information is available on websites or as part of what.
I believe that one of the family members had posted a very touching tribute on, on Facebook. And I think that the Sherburne Facebook page maybe had linked to it. So you should be able to find it if you go online. Yeah, I agree with you, Paul. It was a very, very, it's a very touching story.
So I wanna invite as many people to go to this thing as possible to, to remember the history of what happened in Sherburne. But having said all that, I wanna make a little bit more complicated motion than what Heidi had recommended. So that is to move to accept the donation from Middlesex Savings, the amount of $10,000 to be deposited in the Sherburne 350 revolving fund. And to authorize the use of the funds in accordance with the terms of the donation.
All right, Deb, does that sound appropriate? Deb or Jeremy, I just wanna make sure that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it does.
Okay, and actually, Mary, do you mind turning off the share?
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion on the table there. Do I have either further discussion or a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor, Jeff?
Right.
Um, Steven?
Hi.
Um, Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
And by the way, whoever's renaming people, Jeff's the Clerk and Steven's the Vice Chair. Who's, who's retyping, who's, who's renaming themselves?
It's my name.
Okay. Is this me? Is anyone else reading Jeff Waldron slash SB Vice Chair?
Happened, everyone. That's good, we're good.
Well, we're at it. Can I just?
Hey, hey, keep going.
Can, can I just thank Jeff for his services Chair and, and thank Marion as Vice Chair and Steven, I think was Clerk. Thank you for your service last year.
You were close, but sure.
Did I get it wrong?
Musical chairs.
That's okay. Um, okay, moving on, number four, consideration for various, let me read that a bit more. Consideration of various boards and committees and annual appointments. Um, it is Diane Moore's.
Diane? Hi, so before you tonight, you have various boards and committees with some of them reappointments, requesting a reappointment. And there are a few new appointments here. I have advertised the vacancies in the newspaper, on the website, on Nextdoor Sherburne, so we've met all the posting requirements. And we still have a few that haven't come back yet. I'm still waiting on a few more that we may have to do at the next meeting. But before you tonight is what you have, the current people that are looking to be reappointed and the new appointments, asking the Board to consider their appointments. The first one is Pamela Douse, who's our first ever Treasurer Collector. And the legislation was approved, so she'll need to have an appointment by the Select Board for a three-year term.
Can I make that motion?
Okay.
Well, okay, let me, then let me ask a, more process things here. We pretty much have a bunch of unopposed appointments, and we have one that looks like it might be a contested appointment. Is it okay to simply go through the uncontested appointments and do a universal, all kind of one scoop motion to all of them, and then have the discussion about the contested? Is that, is that administratively appropriate? Does anyone know? Okay, that's what I recommend we do. I'm gonna recommend we go, um, thank, can go through, read these, um, I guess, go, just go through the uncontested ones, frankly Diane. And then we'll have, um, we'll make one motion, clean all that up, and then have a discussion on the contested.
Okay, but I, can I make a, just say something about the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes.
James Guarino is looking for a new appointment there, but the Select Board also have to appoint somebody else. Now, I don't know if it has to be another Select Board member or just another resident, but there has to be another appointment by, made by the Select Board to the Affordable Housing Trust.
It should be a member of the Board.
Okay, so you'll have to decide what you wanna do for that. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to do that tonight, but we can do that for the next meeting if you want. So the first one would be Treasurer Collector, which would be PMed out for a term to expire on June 15th, 2027. The next one is James Guarino to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term for June 15th, 2026. That was appointed by the Planning Board to the Housing Trust, just to let you know. The Agricultural Commission, Jonathan Hudson Walker to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. And the Board of Assessors, we have a new candidate that came to me and asked about the Board of Assessors, and I sent him over to Wendy, the Assessor. And she spoke with him, and he met with the Board, and he comes highly recommended. He is a Sherburne resident. His name is Gregory Sheldon. So they are requesting that Gregory Sheldon be appointed to the Board of Assessors for a three-year term to expire on June 15th, 2027. The Cable TV Advisory Board, Doug Ambos, for a term to expire June 15th, 2026. He's a reappointment. Conservation Commission, Courtney Eck, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027, a reappointment. Michael Wessa, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. Jacob Strauss, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027.
Uh, can I interject just with a question here?
Yeah.
Because Courtney is my wife, so I'm going to be recusing myself from that particular vote. Am I allowed to do that as part of the mass vote, or should we vote on CONCOM separately?
Vote on CONCOM separately.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Counsel on Aging. Thomas Ernstum for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. He is a new appointment. Pamela Sampson for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. She is a reappointment. The Disability Advisory Committee, Frank Hess, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. He is a reappointment. The Elder Housing Committee, Kitty Sturgis, for a one-year term to expire June 15th, 2025. That was a request by Kitty Sturgis. Energy and Sustainability Committee, Frank Hook, for a three-year term to expire, expire June 15th, 2027. The Farm Pond Advisory Committee, Melinda O'Neil, reappointment for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. Historical Commission, Ron Steffens, for a one-year term to expire June 15th, 2025. That was at the request of Mr. Steffens. He's a reappointment. Jennifer Hallerman Chapman, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. She is a new appointment. The Historic District Commission, Ron Steffens, for a one-year term to expire June 15th, 2025. Eugene Goldfield, for a three-year appointment to expire June 15th, 2027. He is a reappointment. Open Space Committee, Sam Nelson, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027, reappointment. Personnel Board, Mary O'Hare Moore, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027. She is a new appointment. The Recycling Committee, Diane Hansen, for a two-year term to expire June 15th, 2026, and that was at her request. Emily Elke, for a three-year term to expire June 15th, 2027.
Okay, thank you for stopping there. Yeah, let's not go any further than that one there. Okay, so I'm gonna pull out Conservation. Is there any discussion or motions relative to all the ones that Diane just read with the exception of Conservation?
So I would make that motion that all the individuals, as mentioned by the Assistant Town Administrator, be appointed with the dates modified, as she modified it in the presentation.
Thank you.
Cause there were a lot of the dates were modified.
Yeah, some of them was specific terms. So I, I'll second that motion.
I just wanna make it clear the motion is, as, as she said it.
Yes.
Not as written.
Yep, as written, absolutely. Okay, all in favor, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
And I am I. Okay, now pulling out just the Conservation Commission. Frank, did you have any comment on, oh, sorry, here's.
I was just gonna make, I was just gonna make a joke that I had, that I had a speech already to go, and I'm disappointed that I get an opportunity to make it. Bahahaha.
We have open mic night at the end. No, I'm just kidding. So, okay, so just going on to Conservation Commission, I'll pull that one alone. Do I have a motion relative to Conservation Commission?
So I would make a motion to appoint the three people listed on the listing, changing all the dates to 2027 expiration date, 2027.
Yeah, I think Michael Lester should say 2027 too. Isn't that right Diane?
Yeah, that was just my big fat fingertip typo.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I, I would second that motion.
Okay, so all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I, and we'll put Steven as I'm staying. Okay, now moving on to, in fact Diane, if you don't mind now reading the Town Forest Committee. What's in our background material?
Okay. So I wanted to make a note on the Town Forest Committee. There was currently one vacant seat and one associate seat available. There were three candidates requesting that the Select Board consider them for appointment as a voting member or as an associate member. David Colleen, who was the current member on the Town Forest Committee. He is requesting a three-year appointment to expire June 15th, 2027. Cornelia Clock Roberts, requesting a three-year appointment to expire June 15th, 2027. And Nicholas Rodenhouse, who is requesting a three-year appointment to expire June 15th, 2027.
Okay, so here's, I think the way we'll do this. I believe, I believe most people are here, at least I saw at least two of them here. Before we even open up to anything, I'm gonna ask each one if they wanna make a statement. Then I'm gonna open up the comments of the Board, and then I'll open up the comments of the public. Look at that there, and we'll have the discussion in that direction. Okay, so, I guess the fellas doing it in order listed here is David Colleen currently here. Hi, David. You're muted. You're still muted. You're still muted. Someone help me mute, or? You can come back. I don't mind that turn here. There you go.
There it is, I found it, um. Good evening, um. I would like to say that I've been on the Town Forest Committee for about thirty years. Um, watching over it, taking care of it for a lot of years. Um, there's a lot of aspects that we've taken care of for over the years. Um. We had, uh, the firewood program that we set up years ago. That, um, is still going strong with some eighty and ninety-year-old participants. Um, few years back, we did a, got a grant from the state, three-to-one grant. To do the red pine. Uh, take care of off the North Main Street. I've worked hard on the, uh, bike trails with Sherwin, uh, forest and trails. Uh, we've done a lot of trail maintenance, um. As you know, we've done a, uh, a, uh, logging area up on, uh, on, uh, the hill. The Tower Hill, uh, between Prospect and, uh, Hunting Lane. And, um. We've ran into a few difficulties there that were, uh, it was weather related at the end of the year. And, uh, it's coming back around now. Um, I was on the road the other day and it looks pretty good. And, uh, there will be a new parking area there. For a few cars, um, gated so that the, uh, nobody can go beyond the gate. Right off of Hunting Lane and, um. You know, everything is gonna get put back after the logger is done moving all the trees out of there. So, um, I don't know what else I can say other than, uh, I've put a lot of years into this and, um. You know, that's about it.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, I'm just in the next one in order here, um, Cornelia Clark Roberts, are you here? I don't see.
Uh, Eric, she couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
Because she could come back another night if you wanted. Her too.
Uh, did she, um, she submitted a background material as people have read, right? I believe about the background, so I wanna.
She submitted something small, yes.
Okay, well, anyway, I'll go on. I believe I saw Nicholas Rodenhouse. I think I saw his name here somewhere.
Hey. Yeah, I'm Nick Rodenhouse. I've been doing forest ecology for about thirty years. I've worked mostly in New Hampshire, but I'm very familiar with how forests function. I spent most of my career studying the impacts of climate change on forests. Particularly on birds. But my research was part of an ecosystem study, so we monitored both insects and plants. I think currently the town forest, uh, is underutilized, okay, for recreation. For, uh, management of biodiversity. I think there are many opportunities and I applied because, no, I did not, I was not interested in displacing anyone on the committee. But I, I applied because, uh, I thought my knowledge would complement those currently on the committee. So I think there's a lot of work to be done in the town forest. We need to monitor and know what we have there. I walk in the town forest almost every day. And almost every other day, I discover a new plant species in the forest. I think recreation is probably the primary, uh, use or should be the primary use of the town forest in years in, uh, in the future. But we need to manage the forest, uh, for multiple purposes, okay? So I just applied because I think I can contribute to keeping this forest alive and well in the future.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, I'll take discussion among the select board. The one thing I ask, cause I've seen this happen before, um, there's gonna be discussion. I'm gonna, you know, kinda stick to the end things. I think people are gonna, you know, all have, jump in different ideas and stuff like that. And that goes to the publicus too. I just wanna make sure like, if you hear something you don't like, we're gonna recognize, we're not gonna jump in and have the, uh, have the back and forth, so, um. Stephen's raised his hand, has his hand raised first. Then Marian, Paul, and this one, I know Paul, you have to jump up. If you could please use your raise hand feature, just cause I gotta keep it orderly. I think this is gonna be a, a discussion.
I just wanna talk before you get to the discussion, that's. But we can do that later.
Okay, yeah.
You need to decide whether we're gonna do. The. Full member separate from the associate member. Two, like two different. Appointments, or are we looking to do both at the same time? I mean, this, this procedural questions here.
I suspect that'll get vetted in the discussion. I do, cause right now everyone's applying to be a full voting member. But you know, I suspect that, uh, and then no one's applying to be the, um, associate member. But I s- I suggest we let this discussion evolve and, um, and maybe that'll sort itself out. So, um, right now we have three applicants for one seat for, uh, for full voting member. Two applicants for a, um, associate member. Uh, Stephen, you would do your, your hand raise first.
Um, yeah, I guess I would, I would wanna start by probably asking both of the candidates kind of the same question. I think there's. Uh, been a lot of, uh, interest in the Town Forest Committee lately. Um, I think part of that may have to do with the fact that the, um, I think the forestry plan is up for. For renewal soon, right? And so I think it's kind of, uh, the, the direction that the committee takes, um, I think is on a lot of people's minds. Um, I, I think for me personally, particularly in light of, um, the, the, you know, the climate, um, change emergency declaration that the town made a couple of years ago. You know, obviously the town forest is a major resource, um, and, uh, I guess. I would like to hear sort of, uh, from each of you, uh, well, I guess Dave and, and Nick, um. What your vision is for the town forests over the next ten years, um, and how you would plan to, I suppose, uh, implement, um, climate. Change concerns into the forestry plan and, and how you might intend to, um, sort of seek input from the public about, um. I mean, given how much interest there's been, just what, what are you looking to do to, to, to seek out the input of the public and, and, um, how will you integrate that into your, your, your time on the board?
I guess we can. I'll leave it up to you. Who, does anyone wanna go first? Answer that question? Do you have a next? Sure, go ahead Dave.
Um. Uh, thank you Stephen, um. Yeah, we work with a, a, uh, professional licensed forester and we work with the, uh, the guy from DCR. And they work together. Um, we get grants from DCR to work on the property and, you know, he looks over the forest and sees what he thinks. And the state thinks we should be doing with it. And then we have, um, you know, the forester comes in. And he looks at it and, uh, we come up with a plan. And, um. You know, it was, uh, the forest is kind of old. And it's, um, about the same age. So it's not growing well, um, the health is not that good. And, uh, so, you know, with the, I go by what, you know, these professionals. Um, say. And, uh. You know, yeah, we, we needed a little bit more advertising, um. So, you know, when, when we have, uh, this section of forest is probably done with right now unless there's some. Um, planting or some small maintenance in it. Um, so we're gonna, you know, right now leave it the way it is. And, uh. So, um. That's about it.
Okay, thank you Dave. Um, how about you Nick?
Climate change is a really big challenge, alright? And we've already seen dramatic effects on the town forests from climate change. If you remember. I think it was two fourteen, two fifteen, two sixteen, we had spring droughts. Two sixteen, two seventeen, we had a extreme drought. Across those years, we had defoliation by gyp, uh, by first winter moth and then spongy moth, alright? That left large parts of the canopy full of dead oak trees. Very, uh, a, a, a big, big change largely due to climate change, alright? So the forests are in recovery now and they're recovering quite well. I think, just my personal assessment. We don't have any quantitative data on that, data on that, but I've been out there, as I said, just about every day. What we need, I think, to do in the future is what the state is now recommending. Retain mature forest. One, it restores the most carbon. And the trees that didn't die off during this period of extremes are in fact those that are gonna carry the forest into the future. And so what's happening to the logs that are currently being pulled out of the forest due to logging operation? Most of them simply go to firewood, right? And of course, I learned at the logging workshop that, one, the logger isn't making any money. And two, that, uh. We don't really know when this logging operation is going to end. So I'm not. I, I think. The way I look at this is we need to look to the future. I don't wanna spend my time criticizing in the past what's been done, alright? Dave has extensive knowledge of these forests and he's served for many years on the Town Forest Committee and served well. What I think we need to do is use. The, uh, effects of the logging operation in comparison to the effects of the drought and defoliation. To do a little bit of experimentation. I talked with Mike Downey, the state forester that came to the logger's workshop the other day. And I was surprised, in fact, at how little they could do in terms of guidance for how we should manage these forests. So I don't think it's wise to simply trust one, uh, forester. Uh, we need to actually use the current literature to identify the problems. Identify ways in which we can restore the forest, okay? And do some experiments to see what works best. That's my approach to this. I think we have a tremendous opportunity. Uh. Right now. But I think, uh. Using the same approaches we've done in the past, um. Is not appropriate, given the dramatic changes that are underway.
Thank you. Dave, I see only thing is I, I'm trying to avoid the back and forth, cause this is where we always get kind of hung up on it. Um, cause if you respond, Nick's gonna respond, you know what I mean? Is it anything that changes your statement substantively?
It's not my statement, it's things that he didn't hear correctly. The day we took the walk in the woods. So.
Alright.
Money thing and it's, and it's, uh. You know, where the oak goes.
Let's wait, let's wait till I, after the select board comments and actually maybe an opportunity of Marian asks for them, then I'll take public comments and you can comment again. Let me do that, cause I just. I, you, you see we got caught with the back and forth thing and I get a little, um. This little concern of losing control of the discussion. Let's hear it, let's, let's hear Marian's question. Or statement, whatever.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't really have, uh, questions. I just have a comment that, um. I. Am in favor of taking this cutting operation such as it was. And using it as guidance for the future. And to do that, we have to look really carefully at how. The forest responds in this new kind of climate change environment, so. Um. I am, um. In favor, I, I, you know, I, I really wish we could expand the board tonight to five members. Because I think we do need some new perspective on it. And in fact, uh, I, I can't propose this here. I have to do it somewhere else, I think, but I'll tell you what I'm going to propose. That we do expand the board to five members, uh, if we can, under the law. Uh, at the next town meeting because, uh, Dave has done tremendous service to the town and. I really want to celebrate that and appreciate it. At the same time, I see the need for new perspective. And application of, of current science on climate change. And, uh, so it, it's a conundrum, but I, I do think. We've said many times that. Uh, boards and committees should not be static over time necessarily. It's always good to have. Some new voices, some new perspectives. And, uh, I will, I favor, being a scientist myself, I have to admit. I favor a, uh. An approach that takes current forest science and climate change science, uh, into account.
Alright, um. Before I make, before I say something is, uh, does any other, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay.
I'd make a comment.
Yeah, please Paul.
Just I wanna answer something that Marion said. The statute. State law. Says the Town Forest Committee shall be composed of three members. So if we want to change that. We either need to do a charter or we need to do a home rule petition. To the legislature. Okay. At. Whatever town meeting. You need a town meeting, a vote of the town meeting in order to submit. A proposal to the state. The state then has to pass a special law to expand the size. So all of that's well in the future. It. It. What we have to deal with tonight is three members. And one associate member.
Well, technically, yeah. And, um, and I will say that, and I think it's safe to say it in this agenda, I'm, I would support the expansion, actually, um, at least to five. Or whatever legislation, I, I'd like the legislation to actually give the town more authority to make it, make a range rather than specify it right into the legislation. Uh, um. But I, I would certainly support something like that, cause I do agree that they need, um, you know, increased voices certainly doesn't hurt, increase activism. Um, the one thing I'd say to counter kind of Marian's point about, you know, um, you need change and stuff like that. It's also hard to, to, um. Suppress, uh, act, um. Act of volunteerism. You know, we've had boards and committees, like I think the traffic safety committee might be one, if I remember correctly, that kind of died due to like, you know, um, um. Lack of volunteers or activity and stuff like that. You know, the personnel board looks like it's kind of, um. You know, hurting a little bit and things like that. And I think there can be, you know, a kind of a counter to both there.
Uh, I agree with you. Oh, sorry Eric, I should have had my hand up.
Yeah, no.
I, I, I agree with you, you know, in the best of all worlds, we would be able to, I keep Dave's longstanding. Uh, record and knowledge, uh, over so many years and also bring in some new ideas. And I think we could do that tonight by making an appointment. Uh. Uh, making also an associate member appointment. Uh, and I, I would propose, can I make a proposal? Um.
My, all hand raised. So are you making a motion Paul? Otherwise I'm gonna hear Marion's motion first.
Uh, I'm not making a motion. I'm just gonna make a comment.
About. I'll hear Paul's comment and then I'll make a motion.
Yes. And then I'd like to make a comment after Paul's comment before your motion.
I, 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 I would say procedurally that we should be making motions until we heard from the public. Maybe get all the input. I think a motion right now, a little premature. But my, the comment that I wanted to make is, is how much this town. Has a gift. Of many volunteers. Who have made this government work and made our, our town work. And. It's nice that we've had many new members come forward. We voted to put many new members on. Various boards tonight. But I'm, I'm real reluctant. To. To send somebody who's put in years and years of service. Away from a, a board that he wants to volunteer to continue on. Cause I think we need to respect. The contribution. We need to give recognition to how much work goes into serving. I mean, we all see it as, as select board members. There's a lot of work. Involved in serving the town. And when you've done that work and you put in that work. It. Just seems. A big ask to not reappoint somebody who's put in that kind of commitment to this town. And I know for, for the fact that, of the current, um. Office holder. He's not only put in years and years of service on this committee, he's done numerous other things for the town. He's on the fire department and so on and so on. I don't wanna list everything that he's done. But this has been a huge contribution to the town, so it's. I, I'm, I'm very reluctant. To displace. A. A valuable employee, a valuable volunteer. That is to say that I, 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 I don't think. I, 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 I think the, the, all the candidates here are, are wonderful. They're a huge asset for the town. It's, it's, it's exciting to, to see them and I do. Want to see them, uh, involved. So I'm, agree with Marion that we should find a way to use. All the talent and all the volunteerism that people wanna give to the forest committee.
Uh, understood certainly, um, Stephen?
Um, yeah, I mean, I just want to say that, you know, a lot of those points can be easily countered as well, right? That uh we have a hard time getting volunteers uh for various boards and committees. And we have um, you know, somebody who is uh very interested in volunteering as a new member for a committee and um, I would very much not like to turn a person away who was volunteering for a new committee that has had um you know, not a lot of turnover. I also would say that um to the, to the point that Paul had about not wanting to uh, you know, turn away somebody who has um, served many, many years in a position, this, this board, this body, before I was on it uh made quite a big deal about specifically not wanting boards to be self appointing and to simply um put uh the same members back onto the board year after year. To the point that the um form for uh board and committee volunteers now has a clause at the bottom that says the appointing authority has the obligation to keep boards and committees diversified with broad representation of the community, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that this board, this body has stated in the past a desire to diversify boards. And I think that when we have somebody who is a qualified and interested volunteer, um, we should um, we should do our best to accommodate them. I think that the associate position also is very convenient because I think that a longstanding member can uh serve as an associate member and still bring all of their knowledge and experience to the board as an associate member. I remember when I was um first getting involved in town, town uh committee stuff, seeing Grace Shepherd as an associate member on the planning board, which I thought was very interesting because I knew that she had had many, many years of experience in town. I just, I thought that that was a very interesting route for somebody to take uh to remain involved in town. So I, I, I think that there are many ways that we can accommodate both the old and the new um in all of our committees.
Can I respond to that in part?
Um, I okay, but I'm gonna teach you how to use your raise hand feature. Like if I have to drive over to your house and show you how to use the raise hand. Too late now, I'll, I'll see you. And then I'm going to acknowledge Jeff, I'm gonna recognize Jeff. And then um, I'm gonna make my own brief statement. Uh, Paul.
Alright, so in part to respond to that is that if we turn away people who have been good volunteers for the town, it sends a message to all volunteers that for no reason, we don't value their service on, on, on a border committee. That's, that's an inevitable message. And while yes, I, I agree that we need to go through a process. I'm not troubled by, by reappointing somebody of, of this caliber who's been such an active member. Be different if he missed all the meetings, hadn't attended in the last three years, blah, blah, blah. The, the other thing is the last time he had a vacancy on this committee, I think uh was maybe Peg Robinson left the, that committee. It took us a while to fill that spot. And there was not a stampede of people coming saying they wanted to be on this, on this committee. So it's when you, when you have something in place, it, and it's good that we have we have people who are applying, I would suggest that the associate position could be just like just like as was described by, by Stephen Si, should be a stepping stone up for a new member. So that the, a, a, a person we think that should ultimately become a member of the committee. Or if we expand the size of the committee again to become a member of the committee. At the first start as associate member for the next year or so, and then be elevated. Thank you.
And I, I'm gonna make a quick statement before I recognize uh Jeff. And that um, I, I do see Paul's point. I think it is a bit more common to see people starting out with some volunteerism, starting associate members. Uh, before Grace, um, there was an associate member who started there and started his volunteerism, who's now the current select board chair um on the planning board at that point in time. And that a lot of people kind of get started is, is those associate member thing. That's kind of a, a very kind of classic model that I've seen her. Um, okay, I'll, I'll recognize Jeff. And lower Paul's hand.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if we can do this. And now Paul said that we would have to have a town meeting vote to increase the size of the board. Could we possibly uh make this associate member a full-time member and then appoint two full-time members? Can we, we have the discretion to change the title of one position from associate member to a full member of the board and then appoint two people?
I mean, I don't think so because I read the legislation myself. I know people can chime in. The legislation says three, you know, I mean, it's mass general laws, it says three.
But we have three, but one's an associate, right?
No.
No.
We have no associate at present.
Oh, they don't have an associate? I thought that's what it said in what I read. It says um there's currently one vacant seat and one associate seat is what it says under town forest committee.
They meant one vacant seat and one vacant associate seat.
Yeah, because there are, there are currently two full voting members that are not up for reappointment.
Correct. And there was an associate seat that is vacant.
But
It used to be filled by Peg Robinson.
There's only one vacant seat right now and it's an associate seat?
One voting vacant seat.
Well, what's the, why does it say and one associate seat? What does that?
There is one, because there's one associate seat that's available too, but it's not a voting member.
Right, but there's two seats available is the question.
Yes.
What I'm asking is can we categorically without a town vote decide to convert the associate seat to a voting seat? No.
That contradicts mass general laws. And just, it's not town meeting that would actually change it. Town meeting would draft legislation to go before the general report to modify the legislation, which I would actually recommend, we give flexibility. I would actually recommend, we wouldn't actually say five. Would actually say anywhere from like odd number three to seven and let town meeting decide, something like that, whatever. Um, but yeah, I, I think it's, I, I think it's kind of clear. We have one associate position to fill tonight. Or whenever, might not be tonight, but now, and one voting member um to fill per se. Let me just, um, let me take uh statements from the audience. And that can be the applicants themselves or anyone else. Please use the raise hand feature on your, on your Zoom. And especially when I am chairing meetings, it's especially hard for me to see people waving in the background. So when you go raise hand, it goes right to the top of my list and I do it right in the order that I see people such as Sean Colleen. Yeah, Sean.
I, you'll notice I changed my title. Much like everyone else gets to do a town meeting, I'm taking the hat off. I'm not speaking as the DPW director. I'm gonna speak as David's son. And I expect people to respect that. I'll be as professional as I can. Dave joined the fire department nineteen eighty-three, that's forty-one years of consecutive service to this town. I don't see anyone on the, on the call tonight that, that matches that. That says something. And I, and I want to remind everyone the gravity of this vote. Forty-one years of service to this town. You can end that tonight by knocking him off a, a, a board that he has served diligently. Take that seriously. I do. And I will absolutely be professional with whoever makes that decision, but I will resent that decision as long as I work here. Know that. Our relationship will change if you choose to do that. There's nothing so urgent right now because of climate change or anything else in that town forest that you need to make that decision tonight to send my father packing after forty-one years of serving this town. You know he would have run into your house if it was burning. You know I will tomorrow night, but I will not even pretend to not, to ignore the fact that you did that. There's nothing, there's no reason to be doing that. There's an associate member. My father has worked diligently for this. He, he developed that plan. Now you, he's been criticized by Nick constantly over the plan. There's no comparison to the previous forestry management plan. There was no previous forestry management plan, mid-plan. We're working off the first one. The, the, the previous plan was Charlie Dowd's planting those red pines fifty, sixty something years ago. So they're working with the best they have. It wasn't climate change that killed all the oak trees, by the way. It was a couple of years of drought and it was some gypsy moth. And I personally have been in charge of taking thousands of trees down in town. It's a serious problem. It's not some wicked science and you don't need a PhD to figure it out. The gypsy moss came through and wiped out pine trees. Ask Paul Durandus about it. Okay, we're all learning from it. It, it's no different for the town forest than anyone else. I'll make a few other comments. This board has talked for years since I was on the board about diversifying the boards, not necessarily reappointing people. You're targeting my father because of some criticism, because people didn't like a bike trail. People didn't like the way they forested. I can't think of a single instance where anyone has been replaced on a reappointment yet. So while the board wants to say that they've been doing that, it's hypocritical to do it tonight because you haven't done it. It's nice that you talk about it and it's nice to think about, but you haven't done it yet. There's been plenty of opportunity. The conservation commission was certainly one during some really hard times a few years ago, and nobody did it. So you're targeting one individual just to make a point. I would also mention that during some criticism a few years ago, because of um, people not being aware of what they were doing with the bike trails. The town forest committee was probably one of the first committees to start doing in-person meetings after they navigated through the COVID. Which I, I would say this board is probably far behind many of the other committees. So as far as an open process, they, they've been more than willing to be open with, with their activities, both with the bike trails, with the, with the forestry management plan. Everything's been out in the open. They've taken a lot of criticism. And I, and I think they should be commended for what they've been trying to do. And I will remind everyone that we have a really, really hard time trying to find um volunteers for boards. There's a ton of vacancies. So to be booting a current chair from a commission is shameful. That's all.
Right, thank you. Um, other, other uh statements from the public? Okay, um, I'll make um, just a quick one. So I've, you know, kept my opinion out of it to the most part. Um I, my view on the town forest in general, people who know me, know I grew up in the house I live in right now and I've budded Rocky Narrows all my life. And I've been going to Rocky Narrows longer than David's actually been on, on the fire department. And um, my view has, has always been uh from a recreation point of view. And um, I think that the recreation has actually helped um like kids be more active. It helped during um the COVID thing. A lot of people, I mean, it looked like a rock concert down there. And um, and that's all kind of been my view. And there always has been a tension, as long as I can remember, between either ecological preservation from a recreation to a, even like if um harvesting wood and, and so on like that. Um, and I'm pleased that Nick mentioned um the recreation side of things, but I know that with the um bike part, the bike paths that David promoted, I agreed with that. I came out and supported that. And there was a bunch of other people who have um also teenage kids and then themselves, middle-aged people who like to bike to do that. And uh Nick was opposed to it at that point. So I'm, I'm a little, have a little hesitation on that, on that side of things. I'll be, I'll be frank about that one there. So philosophically, I think I may um side toward, toward the David side of things here. What I would, what I would like to see, I think, and then we're all alluding to it in fashion or another, is that, you know, if, if the, the new person or Nick doesn't associate, then we can see the discussions and the philosophies and kind of get an idea how things are run. And hopefully we can actually increase the size of this thing within, within a year. Would go to, you know, I don't know if there's gonna be a fall town meeting or not, uh but as soon as a fall town meeting for doing other stuff. Or just to make Jackie happy, I'll do a special just for this item. I make a quorum of ten. I'm just kidding. Um um, but you know, that, that's how I'm biasing right now. And um, I'll hear, I'll hear from Nick because we're still kind of in the public meeting here. And then we'll see what we have for motions. Go ahead, Nick.
I was surprised when the Pine Thrill Trail went into the forest. I didn't have a, any idea that it was going to go in there, but I didn't oppose it. Then the Skills Park was proposed and I worked with those who proposed that to find an alternative site because the site proposed was in a, a very, an area of very sensitive soils and a very interesting rocky top habitat. We found an alternative site and that's Skills Park. I have no idea why it was never constructed. I've currently been working with the, those proposing the new extension of the trail bike in the southern section of the town forest. I've walked it twice with them so that we can find a trail that both preserves biodiversity and works for them. I said in my opening statement that I think that the primary use of these forests should be recreation in all of its forms, whether you love butterflies or birds or walking or trail biking. These forests are a tremendous resource and I'm volunteered for this to help utilize the forest. Education, you know, this forest are dramatically underutilized for education. So, you know, you could have a wild Sherburne day, you know, and have walks and bio blitzes and photography contests and, and you name it, all sorts of activities. And when you come out of the forest, you eat the fruits of the forest, the blueberries, the huckleberries, the you name it, it's just maple syrup. The, the forest is a fantastic resource. And the only reason I volunteered for this position is to help maintain that forest in the future.
Okay, understandable. Thank you. Um, Michael Lesser, I'm saying, that's you, right? It's kind of, that's this iPhone and I, and you're small on my screen. Yeah, that is you. I recognize my You're muted though, Michael. Nope, still muted.
Okay. Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street, follow the procedure. Um I guess this debate, I'll speak a little even though I'm speaking to the chair. Sean, I find your your plea about this uh of I guess in a town thing where we all work together, a little too over of personalizing this about this. I mean, some committees, and even going back to about the conservation commission. No, several members did get appointed who were, uh, just came from who knows where. Um, so it's not, this would be uh that that I, using the conservation commission as an example, isn't such a good case. Um, but I think for certain positions where there are policy issues involved that it's like when you have an election. You're electing people based on what you think their positions might be and what their policies are. And what you want to see. And you like everybody there. Some people you agree with more um than others. And so to make something like this, a, where there is policy to be decided and, and decisions to make it all about personalities, I think is inappropriate when there are substantive issues to be decided here. Um, and, and as I've worked on many committees, I say to people, you don't have to be a member of the committee to help it out and work on things. Uh, whether, uh, so, um, but when it comes down to voting, I know I'm good. I mean, I have to work with you, Sean, in lots of ways, but I hope you don't think less of me for the fact that I uh think that when there are policy issues that people should be able to vote on what they like that way. Um, and not feel constrained by the kind of talk that you were giving. Um, and let the select board vote as per those kind of issues. Um, so, um and there's still a role for somebody as an associate or whichever way it goes. Um, but I don't know. I found that appeal that you did, Sean, and the fact that it's going to be so personalized is, I don't know, I think inappropriate in this setting here. Um, but I'll leave it at that.
All right. No, thank you, Michael. Um, Melinda.
Oh. Hi. I guess my take on things was a little bit differently, which is what I thought I was hearing was a, a lot of people who've shared that they like the diversity of ideas, right? So some folks are saying, you know, hey, I kind of like this this, this way better or, or that way better. But I'm sort of reflecting on what Jeff had said and I thought Jeff was trying to point things in a direction with, of how can we get both of these guys sort of on this, this board so that we get those different or diverse ideas. And I, I appreciate that one position is a voting member and one is not. But I, I don't know, I'm looking at it way more big picture and I'm thinking maybe not get caught up in those details right now. And that it would be of value to have both Nick and Dave on this board. And people have already stated And people have already stated like how amazing it is that we have these super motivated, intelligent. Dedicated people who want to be in a board in a town where sometimes we can't beg people to get on on in these positions. And maybe the conversation might be more focused on how do we get them, you know, both sort of peaceably on this board. And then move forward with the legality of how to expand the board so that everyone has sort of an equal position. That's it.
Yeah, and I I think that's kind of where the conversation is going. What I suspect, and I recognize you in a second, Paul. What I suspect is uh, the undertone when I'm reading between lines here is some people want one person to be voting and one person to be um, associate. And it's probably split on which one they want there and then goes to five, that associate goes probably goes back up um. To be a full member. I think that's the direction I go on here. Um, but I'll I'll recognize Paul. Please go ahead, Paul.
So I'd like to make a motion. May I do so?
Go ahead. Right, and that was appropriate time.
So I want to move to. Appoint David Colleen to a three-year term. And Nicholas Rodenhouse to a three-year appointment as associate member.
Okay. Um, do I have a second on the board? I will second that. That motion. And before I um.
One other part to the motion, one other part to the motion. Sorry. Which was that and that we agree as a board to work on expanding the Town Forest Committee to. Be five, to be a larger committee using the formula that you had articulated, Eric. Giving a range. So the town meeting can pick what size it is.
Okay, and I'll my second will go to that as well. Uh, Mary Ann, a further discussion. We have a motion in a second, but for this discussion.
Alright, my further discussion is that uh, I think uh, Nick needs to agree to. Uh, be a candidate for the associate position before we can vote him in.
Yeah, administratively, I believe you are correct. Uh, Nick, um, do you have um, input on the current uh, motion in second?
I hate to hold things up, but I would actually like to have a discussion with Dave and the rest of the Town Forest Committee before I made that decision. That said. I don't know where this goes, okay? I think we can work together successfully. I have to ask Dave, do you think we can work together successfully? You know, so. That's where it sits. I don't know.
Well, something that we can consider here, since there actually is a person who I um, cannot be present and actually put in here. And I'm just opening this up just to the board. Um, do we want to um, defer this vote? And uh, let people uh, discuss it offline and also the third person if they're still interested. Or do we want to move forward with a a vote now? And Paul, your hand is is left up from before, so do you have something to say or is it a?
No, 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 sorry.
I have a clarifying question, Eric. Which is um. How, refresh my memory, there are three full members and one associate members. Is that what the board is comprised of?
Yeah, because as I understand it, the three, the three um, full members are set in mess uh, ma- legislation, set master laws. I think you can always make it associate member. I don't think that's a strict with the with the master laws, I think you can just make one. I think at some point. I don't know how or why it was just essentially made. You could probably just make another one if you wanted to, do you know what I mean? But I think it's it had meaning there, particularly as associate member, I believe. Can vote in the absence of another member on a certain item, but maybe someone else can chime in on that there.
My suggestion relates to that and and I uh, think both Nicholas and Dave have done handle this well tonight. I do think we owe it to that other candidate just because they had some other obligation that they couldn't be here. It's probably not fair. To assume they're less interested because they were not available. But I would encourage us not only to have that person attend perhaps our next session, but have the other two. Full members of the Forest Committee attend also because I think that they would be. Uh, able to to provide more feedback on this too and 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 that would kind of get at what Nicholas was saying, understanding. The overall Forest Committee's position as well, but I I think we don't have enough input tonight.
Okay, so are you basically um, recommending that we defer the vote?
Yes, I I can make that as a motion. I would recommend that we defer uh, appointing this position. Until two weeks from tonight, whenever our next meeting is and hopefully between now and then we can communicate with the other candidate that applied. And with the other members of the Town Forest Committee.
And she can watch this report if she's still interested.
I'll withdraw my motion in. In favor of uh, supporting what Jeff just said.
Okay, I'm Mary Ann, your hands raised?
Ah, yes, I I also support uh, uh, deferral, but uh, before we. Close this, I want to just remind us that we also were supposed to. Uh, appoint Rick Novak as associate member of the ZBA. I think that kind of got lost at the end of the list.
Um, no, um, then I spoke with Jeannie and Jeannie's, uh, we're gonna leave it as it is right now. He's gonna stay on his chair and then at some point he will move down to an associate membership.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Why I be moved in from the the list.
We gotta lock him in as long as we can.
Yes, I agree.
He, they need to close the farm road homes. Uh, they need to make a final decision on farm road homes. And so I think he will resign from that after the decision is filed with the town clerk's office, which should be somewhere around July third.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. So as far as deferring this vote here, it seems I have a positive um, from Mary Ann. Uh, Paul, I think by the withdrawal positive. I'm just to call people out. Uh, Stephen, um, do you have any thoughts or should I? Take the I got three people to say they want to defer and consider that good enough?
I mean, I think that's good enough. I mean, I agree that it is probably more fair to the third candidate to have her. Uh, have an opportunity to speak on her own behalf.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote to do that. Let us simply defer this vote. We'll put it on the next agenda and uh. Great, my stars chair. Okay, thank and thank you. So and I can't say enough. Uh, thank you for both candidates being interested in this. Um, volunteerism is um, so underappreciated and it absolutely drives this town and all things, so. Thank you both and um, any discussions you can have offline, I think would be um, helpful to the situation.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so moving on. Item number five, consideration slash request for use of ARPA funds.
Yep, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Tom Trainer, your Chair of the Groundwater Protection Committee. Uh, has approached um, us and is requesting an additional nine hundred dollars. To fund the completion of the GIS inventory of wells and septic systems throughout the town. Uh, the nine hundred dollars would fund the remaining effort required for an intern to complete this project this summer. Um, the board has previously authorized fifteen thousand dollars towards this effort to fund the. The effort of a GIS intern and um, um, Tom's. Tom is actually here. You can give more detail if you wish, but it by his calculation, um, he will be short about nine hundred dollars to complete the effort. Uh, and uh, we're hoping for your approval of that. There is ample funds available on the ARPA funds. Um. The ARPA Fund summary is in your in your packet. Uh, there's eleven thousand dollars that is, you know, un um. Unallocated and un earmarked. Um, so funds are available.
Alright, um, Stephen, do you want to say something before Tom talks? So do you want to wait? Uh, let have Tom uh, say something?
Tom can talk to you.
I I I actually am here for questions. Yeah, Eric, I had no no reason to talk uh, past Jeremy's statement.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, yeah, I mean, at nine hundred dollars, I mean, I think that's very easy. I think actually this. To me, this brings up the larger question of the the ARPA funds and where we're at with everything because we're getting pretty close to where. Uh, we actually, we need to get all this uh, money used, right? Um, do we have an update on the uh, Laurel Farms well uh, enhancement uh, project?
Um, by way of update, um, the well um, improvement that you approved has been completed. Um, and the wells have been retested for flow. Um, the flow data has now been delivered to the irrigation consultant. Um, and the irrigation consultant's looking to see if that that flow that was generated is enough to do any irrigation improvements. Um, I will say the the improvements that were done did not drastically improve the flow.
Uh, right, I so I guess really I would just say, um, we should make it a. Its own agenda item at um, some meeting very soon to discuss. What to do with the the Laurel Farms project and essentially the remainder of um. Of the ARPA funds, um, you know, maybe look at the capital projects that we approved at this past town meeting and see if we can. Push some of the ARPA money towards that. Um, so that's all I, I mean. So, sorry to just jump right over your uh, uh, item, Tom, but I mean, nine hundred dollars, that's a very easy yes, so.
Yeah, I assume.
And for what you just said about about putting ARPA funds to what we just approved, you're my favorite vice chair ever. I I just want to make a comment real quick that I sat in on Tom's meeting there they had the other day about the the intern GIS. I thought it was great and I love the effort that they're doing here and um, yeah, I I like not only. Is nine hundred nothing, but it's gonna prove and it's no big deal, but it's um, this has been a great project overall. It really has been. I'm very happy with it, Tom. Thank you for um, for doing this. Go ahead, Paul.
So can I make a motion to approve? The allocation of nine hundred dollars from the ARPA funds available to the town. For the project as described by Tom.
Now, second that.
Alright, on favor, Stephen.
I.
Uh, Jeff.
Alright.
Mary Ann?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
Now am I. Alright, thank you very much and thanks again, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now moving on, consideration of housing consultants. Those of know, we uh, we met on this a couple days ago, had a special select board meeting. Uh, to interview a couple housing consultants. There was a third that couldn't make it at the time and uh. It's basically in vain to basically, you know, we have these um, these forty Bs and this uh, this three A zoning and stuff coming in. That we needed, I felt we needed someone to um, give the town some guidance and basically advise us as to, you know. What's right, wrong, help our um, help answer our questions and so on like that. So I guess Jeremy, is there anything new or Jeff, is there anything new on this or is this a kind of a placeholder in case someone we had more to talk about?
Why can't Jeremy go first if he wants?
Yeah, it's it, there's nothing new to add since you're you're meeting on Tuesday. Uh, this was intended as a placeholder to continue your discussion. Um, I did at the request uh, of of the board last week, did uh, relay the. The contact or webin- website information for the third consultant, JM Goldson or Jen Goldson. Um, she she was the other one that was referred to us for this effort. Uh, unfortunately, she is tied up with uh, helping towns with the three A zoning effort and um, couldn't speak with you until uh, July, so. Um, but I did want to just uh, point out that we we did forward that information to you so you could do some research. Ahead of any potential discussions with her.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Okay, um, Jeff.
Yeah, I I was gonna state that I was not impressed with the two consultants that we interviewed. I personally would not vote. To hire either one of them. You know, I obviously support whatever the group decides, but I wasn't. Impressed at all. Conversely, reading um, a little bit this Jen Goldson's website. I think it is certainly a much better firm than the two we spoke to and so. At a very minimum, I would suggest that we don't make a decision until she becomes available to talk to us. The sign, the sign. That I may be right is if she's not available, there's probably a good reason why she's not available because she's pretty good. So that's my assessment.
Understood. Uh, Stephen.
Uh, yeah, two comments. One is just that the uh, the third consultant, also Jen Goldson, she was the consultant that we hired. To write our housing production plan, so that's how I got into all of this. I got sucked into this was uh, I was on the uh. The Housing Partnership and that was our task was to write the housing production plan. And so we hired Jen Goldson to do that and you know, she did, she did a very good job. Um. Um, but I also, I mean. I, to me, it isn't even anything specific about the two consultants that we saw the other day. Uh, I'm just, I'm still not really sure what what it is that we are hiring a consultant for. You know, I mean, I think generally speaking for a consultant, you you want to have a a specific goal or task, right? Um, you know, write a housing production plan, um, you know, get us in compliance with three A. Right? Get us in compliance with uh, ten percent um. Uh, SHI, but what like, I'm not sure what we tell the consultant, what is it that we want, right? We have to write a contract, there's gonna be a scope of work, right? Like what it, what's the scope of work for this consultant? That's very, very unclear to me. And I think actually, you know, the second one, Judy, her her questions were were apropos to that, right? She was like, well, I'm not gonna. Tell you what I can do. I want to hear from you what it is that you want and then I'll tell you how I can help you achieve that. And we were totally unable to tell her what it is that we want, I felt. So maybe that was just me spinning in my own head, but that's. That's where I stand with it right now.
It's a good point. Before I recognize, I'm gonna respond to that one a little bit there. Um, and this one is difficult. You can tell especially the first fellow was a planner, a classic planner. He writes on housing plans. He probably prepares you for three A because that's coming up. I don't know if we can do this this goal because frankly, and it's like I said on Tuesday meeting, we are being reactive because we kind of have to be reactive. We have these four, five proposals, whatever they are, of forty Bs right in our face. I think it's it's kind of well known around that. That stakeholder that's proposing, a single stakeholder proposing these five proposals is willing to kind of trade for something else. Not trade, but do you propose something else? It's kind of open up. We have to kind of see how that goes and then have someone kind of advise us. So you're right, I don't think we capable, I don't think we'd be able to make to make it. I think we have to react. It's just a situation we're in. I don't think we can make a perfect scope, you know what I mean? Let's says like, we have this and three A tells us we need to do that and therefore we're gonna do whatever. That's kind of like the first, the first guy there, he even said it, he's a classic planner. He knows the world laws and regs and this and that and he says our wants our needs and puts it out. Maybe um, we do need a more uh, special counsel type of thing or maybe. I felt the second one, like you said, wasn't that bad. Actually, I li- I like the second uh, person there. And um, I think she could actually advise us in some ways. Um. But whatever, that maybe not describing it well enough, but but I think I think it's gonna be difficult to have that kind of perfect scope in this current situation. That we're forced to be in here. Uh, Mary Ann?
Uh, yeah, I I agree with you, Eric. I thought the second one was was reasonably reasonably, you know, she got it. Basically, uh, and I'm I'm not particularly. Excited to hear from Jennifer Goldson, well, you know, like Steve, I know her well from the housing production plan. And uh, it was her firm that did the first round of helping the planning board. Uh, on the three A zoning and I have to say the person that was assigned by Jennifer to that. Did not do a stellar job, really. But uh, in the, at the end of the day, I come down exactly where Steve is. Uh, I think we still as a board and as a combined boards drawing on. What the planning board knows at this point, what the zoning board knows and what we know as a group. Uh, we still have a lot of thinking to do together before we know what we're it. First of all, before we know what we need to make uh, uh, to de- devise a strategy. Uh, and then even to define what a consultant could do for us. We're not there yet. I think we have our own homework to do. And then if we get to the point where we need a consultant, fine, then we'll look for the appropriate person. When we have a problem that we need to solve, that we can't solve in-house. But uh, as Eric said, you know, we're we're reacting to a a series of forty Bs. Uh, I'm starting to sound like a broken record on this, but at the end of the day. They're forty Bs, you know, we can't negotiate away the forty B law. Each of those projects has to be judged in the context of its own location, its own lot. Uh, if it's not a forty B, then uh. You know, what the what the alternatives are for those lots that that is being thrown to us by the developer. Um, well, we we either do a forty B or we adhere to town bylaws. But each of them uh, has its own uh, problem. So, you know, basically, I just uh, think we're kind of. Waste, spinning our wheels, thinking about a consultant when we should be using that time. Learning what we need to know about these specific projects. And then working together to with the planning board and zoning board to uh, brainstorm and approach.
Okay, understood. Understood. I mean, only count, I will say quickly is that. It's, think of it like town council. We almost have town council on retainer. Something comes up and we ask them, blah, 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 blah. That's kind of how I'm seeing this. And I think it's like the world's worst kept secret that stakeholders. Something comes up and we ask them, blah, 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 blah. That's kind of how I'm seeing this. And I think it's like the world's worst kept secret that stakeholder is gonna propose something else. And we're gonna want some advice as to like how much we push back on this or do whatever. And I I don't, I'd like to get some view outside of like all in house. Also, we get great in-house talent here. Don't get me wrong, but I don't, um, I'm gonna, I'll recognize Paul.
So I had a couple of points. One is that because of my own scheduling conflict, I did not attend the meeting in which these interviews were held. I I hope that they're available online and somebody can send me the link to that so I can listen to them. But I I have worked with um, two of the consultants, the one we haven't interviewed and one that we did interview and have favorable um, views on both of them. And so do the towns that have hired them. They've had good results on that. So I can give a positive recommendation to two of these consultants. I don't know the first at all. I do want to respond to the issue of, you know, what are we looking for? And when I heard the discussion, it was about, well, the select board and the planning board. Now, the focus here is that the town is organized an affordable housing trust. And the Affordable Housing Trust is charged with developing affordable housing. They have powers to buy property without town meeting vote. They have authority to do amazing things. If the Community Preservation Act passes, town, the voters, there will be a funding source and and revenue stream that goes to the Affordable Housing Trust. These Affordable Housing Trusts would be a primary user of this housing official. The housing consultant helps put together the deals that makes projects work. And one of the constant comments I've been making about the Coolidge Street project is that it's 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 lacking the housing coordinator or housing consultant to sit down and put together a contract about who's going to do what, when construction is going to start, what's going to be built there, what size, all all of those things has hasn't been done in a systematic way, the way I've seen it done in other towns. And that's in part because we're relying on volunteers. It's part we are relying on non-housing specialists. So the idea behind having a consultant is somebody who can call up Toll Brothers and say, look, are you going forward this project or not? And then when? And what do you need to get this project done? Let's get a list. Let's put together an agreement that if we do A, B, and C, they will start construction on this date and this project will proceed. That, that's what a housing consultant does. It provides the the ability to go from beyond talking to getting something done. I've served on a lot of boards and committees, and there are some boards and committees that spend a lot of time talking and and that's good. It's good to develop consensus. It's good to get everybody on the same page, all of those things. But some of these projects like this Coolidge Street project has already been voted on, has already been discussed. We know what we want to do there. We just need the person to do it. So it's like we all agree that we should build a house and we know how tall it should be, how many bedrooms it should be. We need a builder. And that's what the housing coordinator does. So they report basically to the Affordable Housing Trust. They have through the Affordable Housing Trust, the ability, amazing abilities that are very important to getting affordable housing done. And if we're going to build affordable housing, get to our 10%, have it consistent with the community's goals, plans. You need somebody who knows who is an expert at doing of getting these things done. I'm 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 not criticizing anybody or any organization or whatever. I'm saying I'm saying if you want to 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 put a nail into a piece of wood, you don't sit around debating, do we use a rock? Do we, do we try using as a stapler? You get a carpenter and the carpenter has a hammer and he hammers the nail down and it's done. That's what the housing coordinator or housing consultant would add to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I will say that does that seems to um, be a little different than I think what other people have thought about us. Maybe it's to require some further discussion. Um, Stephen.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that I guess that's what I was gonna say. I I think Paul, what you're describing feels very different from what we were envisioning slash talking about um, two days ago. I mean, you are very uh, focused on the Coolidge project and the Affordable Housing Trust. I mean, I guess question one. I don't, the has the Affordable Housing Trust come to the select board and requested a consultant? Um, because that would change things. And then with the Coolidge project, I mean, I I think we're in discussions with all of the relevant parties. Um, certainly, I know Jeremy and Marion have been quite active and I've kind of been getting myself up to speed and I'm pretty aware of where everything is at. And I, you know, may unless Jeremy and Marion think differently, I don't believe that what is lacking there is a housing consultant. Um, you know, I think that uh, prior to Marion getting onto the um, select board and prior to Jeremy, uh, beginning as the the town administrator, certainly for years, I think it was maybe not going as efficiently as possible, but it was also, you know, the pandemic. But ever since Marion and Jeremy have been on board with that project, I think it's been going forward as quickly as reasonably possible. Um, so on that, on that, on that front, I don't think that we need a consultant. I I, you know, I I think it is more with the current forty Bs and the changing this and that, like Eric is saying, but to me, it's like what we want is, what we want is one of these whole housing consultants to live in Sherburne and uh, show up at public meetings and impart their knowledge on us. That's what we want, right? Um, but that's not a, that's not a contract that you sign with a consultant, right? Maybe I'm wrong, you know, maybe there are consultants that work on retainer, but uh, from for my, for my experience, usually they're they wanna, they want a specific task and they want to know um, uh, what 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 their what their job is. Um, so.
I mean, I said it at the meeting on Tuesday. Remember, um, the second one asked, you have to tell me what you want. Do you want less density, this, that, whatever? And I said, I don't think all of us in this thing can give you a uniform answer. Um, before I recognize Marion and Jeff in a second, maybe at some point, some small subset of us, maybe there's two of us meet with Jeremy and try to pull together actually what we're actually looking for and present to the board to actually make common, give some structure to it. Um, just a thought there, but Marian, um, please go ahead.
I I agree with you, Jeff. Um, you know, I listened to Paul, Paul, your your comments are certainly well taken. Uh, I'd like to see the Affordable Housing Trust be able to do more than it can at present with CPA or whatever. But it occurred to me as you spoke that um, the that we haven't, we've been working a little bit independently on these uh, various negotiations with Toll Brothers, with Framingham, with Natick, and now with uh, with Bob Murchison and some things. Um, and uh, I think probably for, for, for legal and and strategic reasons, we haven't sat down and given the whole select board everything that that's happened and everything that we know and everything that's been done. So I understand that um, some of you are kind of uh, a little bit in in the dark on the progress that has been made. Maybe it's time to put something together to the, to the extent that we can. Uh, for the whole select board and for the public for that matter, but uh, this involves negotiations with adjacent towns that are basically going to end up as legal negotiations and they're not really open to public comment at this point. They will be when we have a proposal. But um, so the the question is, in what sort of venue can we, you know, download all that knowledge so that everyone on the board at least is up to date? I'll just throw that out and leave it. Think about it.
And uh, sorry, um, Jeff Walsh. Yeah, please go ahead, Jeff.
I put my hand down initially because Paul said what I was gonna say. Uh, I strongly feel we need a consultant because we need to integrate all those things that are going on. We may, we definitely, Stephen's point is right, we haven't defined the scope. But I guarantee you that we can use the support because you know, we, the whole Toll Brothers project and the impact on doing something different with Bob Murchison on Cooley Street needs to be considered, for example. What if we have, you know, 200 housing units or 220 housing units in Cooley Street? I I feel quite strongly that we don't have the resources that we need to implement this. And you know, I'm been involved a little bit, not to the degree that Jeremy and Marion have been involved, but I don't think we want it to be a volunteer effort and totally. And they can uh, advise the other boards, including the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a good point, Paul, but we have to think about if we want to create a tip on Coolidge Street or what we're gonna do there. There's a whole lot of issues. And to my view, just like we hired Tom to be our advisor on uh, public water supplies, he was indispensable because he had specific external knowledge on what needs to be involved in negotiating a public water supply. I think we need a housing consultant to help us with all of these initiatives, in including um, supporting different committees in town and it includes, you know, M V T A Communities Act perhaps and other things that all need to be integrated and and affordable housing. So I I don't think we can do it with volunteers despite all the good efforts we've had.
Well, um, Addie, go ahead. You found a raised hand.
I found the raised hand. Of course, whether I can figure out how to turn it off is another story. Sorry, I'm doing it from the phone. It's always a challenge. Um, so I am adding my adding my wife and I guess I'm speaking with wearing my planning board and housing trust hat and just the experience that I've seen through the years and I um, I don't know all the of the consultants that you met with. I'm um, familiar with Jen Jennifer Goldson for the work that we did with the first round of the housing production plan. And um, we were, it was a a wonderful experience in 2016. We had great community engagement and Jen Goldson was starting out at the time with her firm and um, put a lot of personalized effort into our town and was great. In the years that I've been kind of trying to educate myself as much as I can on all the various housing issues throughout the Commonwealth and kind of what where Sherburne sits with how we manage to achieve kind of the state mandate and do things the right way and uh, get up to speed. I've attended several different um, conferences where Judy Barrett has spoken. And um, been very impressed by her. And she's extremely connected with all of the various housing authorities in the state and has a wealth of knowledge and it would be beneficial to have someone um, like that to, you know, we we are so many times um, we don't fit the you know, that you know, the infrastructure provides a challenge often. So there's so many technical questions that come up because we're, we have a different kind of methodology because of the infrastructure. Um, I don't know that this person, I don't think we could be doing anything different than what we are doing right now with Coolidge, um, because it's two-pronged approach. You've got the infrastructure question and then you have the developer and what they're going to do question. And the developer can't proceed without the agreement that the the intermunicipal agreement and the legislative action that needs to take place. So as far as that, I don't think having a consultant would have made that move along any faster. Um, extremely grateful for the work that Marian and Jeremy have done. And it's unfortunate that we lost the years previous where we certainly did try at the planning board level to um, make the communication happen, but there were things just beyond our control as a town. So um, we're where we are now, but um, a consultant within the last two years, we've we've done as well as we can. Um, the housing trust has kind of doesn't have a lot of teeth because we don't have any funding and also don't you know, construction is expensive. We're not in the business to be building things. We've learned um, lessons in the past. And so um, you know, with the number of forty Bs that we've had in the last couple of years, I think one lesson we've learned is we don't necessarily want to be building the affordable housing. We've got enough other kind of people interested in building that affordable housing. We're just trying to guide it as best as we can. So um, that's kind of my rambling two cents on all of that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Addie Mae. I guess my, I'm gonna go back to my recommendation before, um, is a one or two volunteers out of this board. Obviously, I'm one too. Just want to meet with Jeremy, maybe help kind of pull together what we actually want. It seems like we're all a little bit different here. Some are more different than others. But there's a little different of what we're looking for. Maybe if someone who's listened well and kind of can pull together, I'm looking for someone to react as these uh, for uh, these forty Bs uh, change into something else. I think Paul's looking for something more, sounds like either specific on Coolidge or someone that's more almost boots in the ground, almost contractor related. And um, it's not like Marion was looking for someone more like a planner, you know, we're all kind of got a little bit all over the place. Um, um, you guys give me your thoughts on that. If one or two of us meet with Jeremy, and I don't want to say pull out to get a scope of work, but it's like, it's just bullets. Here's what we want them to do. And bring it before the board so we can actually talk about it and vet it.
You mean what we want a consultant to do or?
Yes, what we want, what we want a consultant to, what we want help with. That's just an idea.
Your town council comment was good in other, we didn't specifically tell, you know, town council what we need their help with, but when we need Heather or Chris, we call them.
Yeah, yeah, but I just, I don't think a housing consultant is the same as legal counsel, right?
No.
I mean, you know, even when you were talking about um, the special counsel we had for the uh, public water, I mean, that was a very specific defined project with a goal, you know? I mean, I think to me, that's the thing, right? I'm like, I I have no doubt that at some point the Affordable Housing Trust is going to need a consultant, right? Because they're gonna get some money somehow and at some point they're gonna want to build something. And they might be like, and and at that point, it would be appropriate to be like, all right, we have a project in mind. We don't really have the bandwidth of the expertise to take that from beginning to end. So why don't we hire a consultant? And there, boom, you have a well-defined project, you know, for them to work on. But right now, I just feel like, you know, again, I'm not saying that we don't, it wouldn't be beneficial to have more expertise in the room. I'm just not, and this might just be my own ignorance with how consultants work, but like, I just, I don't know that there is a framework in place that's like, we just want to hire you to have more expertise and we're just gonna bounce our ideas off of you whenever, whenever uh, we encounter them, you know? Because ultimately, at the end of the day, it's like, a lot of these decisions are more like policy decisions, right? Like, what direction do we want the town to move in, right? And that's a decision that we make. That's not a decision that we ask a consultant, how should we feel about this? How, what, what should our goal for the town be? That's they ask us what our goal for the town is and then they just try to get get us there. But if we don't know what the goal is and it's like, I don't know how, if I were a consultant, I would be like, I don't, what do you, what do you want from me? I don't, you know?
All right, good night. Well, I can go to, I, let me go downstairs.
Hey, Deb, mute yourself.
You, you, Deb.
All right, all right. Um, and as I, I brought it up with Jeremy actually a while ago, and I brought it up again, that maybe there is either a special uh, counsel or maybe I sit down actually with Chris and chat about some of their knowledge resources. We all gonna need some reaction nature. It's like I said, my, and maybe it's just my concern, but this whole thing with, you know, the stakeholder with Bob and his forty Bs and switching gears and stuff like that. That's what I want. I want advice on that. And maybe that is counsel advice. Maybe it is. Because you know, Bob's gonna come back to us and said, hey, instead of plan A, I'm gonna do plan B, but I want X, Y, and Z. And we're gonna need someone to react and see what's realistic and maybe more of a uh, solicitor or a um, a counsel type type advice there.
And I think that is also something that Judy had mentioned is that maybe what you actually want is le, uh, you know, sort of housing legal counsel as opposed to the more planning side of things, right? Because because we don't have a plan.
Yeah, no, it's it's true. Uh, Paul, give me your thoughts.
So I wasn't talking about the town building projects like has been mentioned, talking about a concept called I'm talking about a concept called local initiative projects, local initiative projects. So what my, the Affordable Housing Trust that I represent, go out and identify, you know, a piece of tax title property, for example, in the town. They then get that property and they market it to a developer. And then they work out an agreement with that developer that there's gonna be twenty units of housing here. And they have that agreement, then they pursue that so that the goal is that twenty units of housing get built. The, of people on the Affordable Housing Trust that I represent don't have those skills. I mean, there are people on those trusts who, who are like on a building committee, also on building committees, so they, they, they understand building and they understand procurement and, and all that kind of stuff. But that's not really why they're on the Affordable Housing Trust. The point is to build housing. The point is to provide affordable housing. The point is not just to meet the ten percent goal, but to provide affordable housing for, for the teachers, the firefighters, the, the police, for all municipal workers, for all all the people, a diversity of people who should be able to live in Sherburne. So their, their goal transcends individual projects. But at the same time, they are available to deal with proposals from adversarial situations where a, a forty B comes forward with, you know, demands and want this and they want that and they want waivers. You've got, you've got an expert who can tell you, you don't, you don't want to waive this. Or if you waive this, it's gonna have this consequence when it comes to the building. And at the end of the day, you just don't want to build housing, you want to build safe housing. You want to build housing that, that works for people, not just so you can check off a box that the housing is built. It, you, you just need that level of expertise. So having said all that, I'm trying to clarify that I work with Affordable Housing Trust. I work with planning boards, I work with select boards, I work with housing coordinators. And I know what they do and they're amazing to watch them in meetings and in discussions to provide advice about, no, you shouldn't do that. And even as the ZBA is considering a forty B project, who are they relying on for the housing aspects? So if the developer says, I wanna, I wanna build the X, who is giving the ZBA the advice of, is, what are the alternatives to X? What's, what's really good for this community? That's the housing coordinator. It's, it's an advisor to the Board of Appeals, it's advisor to the Planning Board, it's advisor to the Affordable Housing Trust. It's, it's somebody who knows housing, knows, you know, if we wanna, if we wanna build something, if we want to do a renovation at Woodhaven, knows where the grants are, knows where to get the money, knows what you really need.
Okay, I'm not, I'm just interrupting you here, but just, I'm, I'm being a little repetitive. I think you're still reiterating the prime fact, I don't know if we're on the same page what we need and I'm trying to get to like how to get us to kind of get on that, you know what I mean, what we need. I'm sorry to cut you off, Paul, if you have anything more, but how about you, Marion?
Yeah, I, I'll be, I'll be quick. I, I think we're talking about a lot of different things here. And none of those consultants that we saw were anywhere near the kind of thing that Paul is, is wanting. Uh, and I think, uh, well, one thing that I, I know is missing, talking about our reaction to all the forty Bs and the possible changes in those. As a board, we haven't really discussed them either. We haven't even really discussed in depth uh, how those might be approached and what might be acceptable and not acceptable. So I just think we have a lot of homework to do and I, I think a consultant is, we still have a lot of figuring to do before we hire anybody.
Now, it's kind, well, so my thought was, these proposals are coming. I'd almost like to have someone on board and listening, engaging with us as they roll in, rather than us watch everything, then hire someone after the fact. I don't know. Uh, here, here's what I do know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to come to a resolution here, I'm trying to work, get us to work together and it seems like we're definitely on, we're not disagreeing with each other, we're just on five different planets right now. I'm on the gas giant, the Jupiter. And so I just want us to kind of, what, someone suggested me a mechanism. I suggested that a couple of us get together, Jeremy, perhaps if we each independently email Jeremy what we're looking for, he tries to compile it and, and kind of concisely, I don't know, I, I, I guess someone suggested to me how we kind of pull this together, or maybe we don't want to go on a consultant. I know I myself, I'm starting to think more and I'm gonna talk to Petrini one-on-one about more legal advice. And I'm, I'm gonna engage him a little bit just to get some ideas with him, or maybe with Jeremy as well. Someone, I guess someone else come up an idea of how, of how we bring this to some kind of, and our next step, what the next step is here.
I think that's a good idea, talking to Petrini, because, because we could consider an attorney. But I'm pretty close to Paul in, in agreement, which is an unusual situation. And I'm also looking pretty smart for stepping down his chair when these thorny issues come up. I, I think that we need someone on board. I just think that we have a lot of volunteers doing a lot of great things. I'm not sure that we can write the exact scope. I like the town council model, if you think of it, our town council advises the Board of Health all the time, regulatory boards all the time, without us even knowing about it. And they bring in maybe Mike Terry or a different attorney. So they're constantly doing different things for the town and we didn't tell them everything we needed. They have a, a resource team that knows municipal government and what types of topics come up, whether it's a labor issue or a contract issue or a development issue. And they have people on staff with different types of expertise. So I'm of the camp that it's a fallacy for us to better define what we want. Because that's, what we really want is a, a utility infielder and Brock Holt, if you will, in the baseball terminology that can step in and fill different roles, in my view.
Alright.
Eric, I, I guess what I would suggest is, like, like you said, you, you intend to talk to Petrini. I feel like if, if you want to talk to Petrini, I, I honestly, I think that you are probably the one who feels the most urgency in the sense that we're about to get into it with, with Bob Murchison and his various proposals. Whereas anything that the Affordable Housing Trust is gonna do is multiple years down the line, you know? So if you can explain to Petrini kind of the vision of the type of help that you're looking for, maybe he can at least advise as to whether what we're looking for actually is a special legal counsel that specializes in, in, in housing or if there is some kind of a consultancy that would fit, fit our needs.
Yeah, you know, I'll do an initial conversation there. Is there any more thought, um, like Jeremy helping pull together some kind of like bullets or scopes to try to summarize what he heard here today?
Yes, did I get my hand up? Did I raise it?
Does anyone want to work with Jeremy, I'm trying to pull something together, I mean, my thoughts might be different than others. And like I said, I've always kind of envisioned this being someone like, like a retainer type thing, but does anyone want to work with Jeremy to help pull some of this together?
Normally I'm happy to, except I don't know what I want, so there'd be no bullet points for me.
I, I, I'm normally happy to do stuff too, it's just that it's not at all clear to me what we're looking for. And I think we need to discuss it among ourselves a little bit longer. And I'm, I, I think all of us need to be more brought up to date on what's happening and what's been done.
And that's why, that, again, that's why the catalyst was like, if Jeremy puts a page together of what he's hearing here today, at least it's a starting point, well, something in front of us. But is no one too interested in that? Well, Bob Ball said he was interested in that, you know, let's do that. So let's put this agenda item on next week, heck, it'll be a standing agenda and we'll make at the end to make sure we hurry it up. Because I feel so bad for Jackie, you guys realize that she's the next thing here. I'm so sorry, Jackie, I would have moved you up a long time ago if I actually read that, or if I read the agenda earlier. Um, if you put her after that and the, uh, the nominations, appointments. Let's do a stab, Jeremy, try to get, keep it to one page, a few bullets of what you heard here today. We'll read it. Um, I think that'll be something. And either me or you and me, um, engage in Chris and talk about skill sets on certain things. Um, then I can talk about the things that, uh, what do you call it, you know, I think Bob's talked to each one of us about stuff like that. Uh, Paul, your hand is still up, was it just some from before?
Just that I was agreeing that if you gave me something to look at, I'm happy to add comments on it.
Yeah, I think that helps a lot, that's a starting point. Anytime I've done anything like this, where at work or anything else, or everyone's all over the place, you gotta start somewhere. Outline or something like that, and maybe that, that's alright right now. Alright, that'll be our next steps. With no more discussion, I will move on to next agenda item, item number seven. You know what? Because they don't care if we take this out of order and go to item number eight. So Jackie can go to bed. I don't think we need to vote on that, do we? Can we simply go to item number eight? Um, acceptance housing changes to the select board, uh, regulations for code, um, code codification project. Hi Jackie.
Yeah, I, thank you, Eric. Um, yeah, so as part of the codification project, all of the regulatory boards need to approve the numbering changes and for the select board that is farm pond and also driveways. So what's included in your packet is what we believe are the current regulations. Farm pond, there are no housekeeping issues. Um, there were some for driveways, but it's, it's basically pretty simple. In order for the project to be published, um, all the regulations have to be approved, the cha, uh, the changes. So.
Uh, Jackie, uh, is the current, uh, s- select board regulations updated on the website?
They are on the website, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Paul's raised his hand, go ahead, Paul.
So generally, if you're going to change a regulation, you should have a public hearing. So I don't think it's something, just take the description as being housekeeping and vote it tonight. I don't think it's properly before the board. If you're going to do this, I think you should have a hearing for us to amend our regulations.
There, Paul, there are no amendments, you're, you, you, the, the regulations are staying exactly as they are. Except for the codification problem, um, program, they'll be numbered. And it's basically like changing, uh, Board of Selectmen to Select Board. It, it's nothing, it's, 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 it's nothing. It, it's, you're not changing the regulations, they're just some housekeeping issues. Want to do that, then that, then that's fine, have a hearing, but I don't think it's necessary.
I mean, if, if it's nothing that's actually changing any substance or anything like that, and I don't know the law like Paul, first to say that. It seems reasonable that just changing numbers here and there, that everything is, is the same that, you know?
It's not just changing numbers. It's got, it's changing the name of the select board, it's changing the name of that the community housing and development, that community maintenance and development.
Correct, but the, Paul, we've already voted on that. The town is, the, the, the town has already voted to change the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So we're just, they're just correcting it.
I, I, I understand, it doesn't matter. If you change one letter, one comma, you should have, I, I'm just giving you the legal advice, same advice I give to you.
Are you saying that it is actually illegal to do this without a public hearing? Or you're just? Um, okay.
I'm saying you need a public hearing. It's not a big deal, there, there'll be nobody commenting on it. But I, I also asked the question, it's so many places in here, it says amendment pending. And I didn't understand what that meant. So this.
Because they're making, they, they are recommending the change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board because that's what the town voted on, so, um, et cetera, all the other ones. Um, we don't have community maintenance and development anymore, we voted to change it to Department of Public Works. So basically, until the board uh, votes to approve those changes, the changes are pending. They can't publish the code unless you guys approve, just like we did the housekeeping and we did the, um, for the general bylaws, we changed, um, the town voted to approve all of the housekeeping issues.
Yes, but if you look at section three twenty dash eight trees, if you look at three twenty dash eight trees, this is long statement in here. And this, there's no reference to any of those words that you just mentioned, but it ends by saying editor's note, amendment pending. So when I look at it, I don't know what the amendment is that's pending.
For trees, three twenty paint, uh, point eight, the amend, it's amended to change scenic road bylaw to scenic road regulations, that's the change.
Alright, I'm, I'll, if it's okay, I'd like, okay, uh, so if you're still talking, go ahead.
I, I, I'm just giving you some free legal advice, just do whatever you want.
Okay, so let me hear from Mary Ann, then I have an idea.
Oh, just a question, doesn't this serve as a public hearing, what we're doing right now?
It has to be posted.
Posted has a procedure the way it is, you have to do the whole, whatever.
Yeah, advertise in a paper, actually, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My question would be, what's, what would be cheaper? Uh, advertising a public hearing or asking town council's opinion?
Here's honestly, I was gonna go with this, I was actually gonna recommend we collect a vote right now and then ask council, you know, is it legal that we did that, pure, pure and simple, ask our town councils, was it okay that we did that? If anyone says no, we'll have a hearing, but at least we can kind of bang this out now, I don't see this as anything. If it is legal what we're doing now, this is such a non-controversial, like Paul said, no one will show up to the hearing, you know what I mean? Um, no one's gonna care, it's gonna be very, uh, very straightforward. Um, but I, I, I would actually suggest we move to vote now, see the supporter not support this or what have you. And then, and then ask council's opinion, you know, to what we do, is what we did okay? If it's not legal, it won't count, I'll have a hearing. Any thoughts?
Good plan, and I think I'll relocate my driveway this weekend before you vote.
Does it have the thing about driveways, kind of feet being paved? Because I think I'm grandfathered out of that one.
Uh, I don't know, I don't see it right here, it is such.
I know it's somewhere in the, in the regs.
But, um, no, I think your plan's a good plan. We're, we want to get forgiveness instead of approval is what you're saying.
Yeah, or yeah, most approval, you know? Did what we do is illegal, pure and simple, if you tell, negate it, that's fine.
I, I think that's a good plan.
Okay, do I have any other thoughts or any?
Motion that we, um, uh, vote to accept the, the language as printed in this, um, section and subject to, uh, review by town council.
Alright.
Confirming, review and confirmation by town council.
And see, Stephen was second to that. Okay, all in favor, uh, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Uh, Paul? Did he say aye?
Aye, yes.
And I am also aye. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's it. Okay, so next up, just taking a little bit out of order, uh, select board meeting policy, uh, discussion, Jerry Morset.
Yeah, um, just bringing this back for you, this was the policy that you updated in January. Uh, it was policy on meeting scheduling, access and recording. Um, the main update at that point was to, you know, request, um, regulatory boards to record their meetings so that they could be then later broadcast. Having it now in effect for about five months or so, um, just bringing it back to see if uh, there's any changes or updates that the select board would want to consider or, uh, if, if you're comfortable with the policy as it stands.
Any comment on the board?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking for my hand, here we go. Uh, yeah, I, I noticed in rereading that, that we did not Uh, yeah, I I noticed in rereading that that we did not uh say anything about uh minutes. Uh, you know, some boards. Uh, just don't bother to post minutes at all and when they're. And and they're in person and they're not recorded. And it's not a regulatory board though, so I don't know to what extent we want to try to. Get boards to write their minutes. Or or committees.
I mean, I think ultimately with that, uh, that it's a it's a violation of open meeting law to not post the minutes, so even if you're the. Least consequential committee in town, you're still a public committee. You have to post your meetings in forty-eight hours and you have to post your minutes, so um. Uh, so so I I think it's redundant for us to have in our policy that you have to follow the law.
And that's what I was gonna say. It is anything that's in the law. Some of these things with the with the Zooms and stuff like that, we're kind of making it a little extra. You know, we're putting this on that's.
Right, yeah, that's true.
It's already written into state uh into state law. And I think those here are just like, you know. If he's enforcing them, reminding people.
Yeah, I guess enforcing or reminding is another uh discussion for another day.
This comes from the whole Zoom, and to get a little historic, I mean, Paul's got more history than me, but you know, um, sometimes not everyone could get the room with the recording. So you say before Zoom. We had um and um, what's his name, Rick, I think, who would do the recordings, would come in and um, one, it costed money and uh two, um. It's just inconvenient for a small little group of like three people I'm meeting with, like maybe one person in the audience, if even that. Unless it almost makes sense, but now it's almost free and it's easy to do. And so we've kind of expanded that um. That recording requirement even further with this. Um, it's a little reactive to a. Committee that was resisting such a thing and we had we had that reaction, but then we kind of kept on staying with it, even though they um. That committee changed a little bit and we actually um got more in compliance. Yeah, Jeff, you know, you wanna say something?
It really costs us money. Our, the way we negotiate with Verizon and and Comcast is that's part of their. You know, they have the education and government channels. So they're required to do that as part of their um agreement with the town.
Even if we um did like, imagine if that if that fellow came in for all of our committees. Well, first, we'd have a conflict because committees meet sometimes at the same time and it's only one room.
We only right now have one room, but they don't charge us for doing that because it comes out of their cable fee. Or their reimbursement in the cable.
I mean, if we did all the.
They got a contract to have. The, what do they call it? C E G, what's it called? I can't remember. It's it's a. General Cable Government and um Education, three different channels they technically have of content. And for them to provide the content. They they film it to do that.
Okay. Uh, Stephen, what uh?
Uh, I would just say that I'm okay with the uh policy as it's written. You know, we require the regulatory boards to uh to do so and so and. We encourage uh the non-regulatory boards to do so as well. Um. Some of them may choose not to have uh an online component or broadcast it. I I I don't feel strongly that we should need to require. Uh, you know, the recycling committee to to have Zoom meetings if they don't want to.
Okay. Um, yeah, I agree with that as well.
For the record, um, uh, Eric, uh, the. Supplemental budget bill that was signed by the governor last March. Uh, extended the open meeting law requirements or the the waivers of the open meeting law requirements, allowing remote participation for two years. Um, so you know, boards are allowed to do remote participation, have Zoom meetings. Uh, and and conduct business remotely through uh March two thousand twenty-five per. Um, that budget bill signed by uh the governor.
Okay.
Just wanted to remind folks that it is currently allowed for for boards and committees to have remote meetings.
March twenty-five, that's right to the end of my chair hood. Good. Alright, um. Any other thoughts? The uh, do we need to vote on this? Like, we give a consensus that we like it? What's the appropriate uh motion here if we are? It seems like we like it. Does anyone have any problems or any comments or issues with this policy? It's right before you need background material? I like it. So do we need a vote? Maybe someone tell me.
No.
So, okay. Looks good. Thank you. And thank you very much for pulling this together. He's very good. Alright, next up, next up the bat, consideration of raising the senior tax credit allowance from one thousand to fifteen hundred annually. Um, who's presenting? Alright.
Ah, that was fast.
I second it.
It's a no brainer.
Thank you.
It's absolutely no brainer. There's no question about it. It's an absolute no brainer, no question. Alright, um, even though you didn't raise your hand, it's late at night. I'm just moving on. So all in favor, uh, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Right.
Marian?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Alright, uh, consent agenda.
Little approval.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Right.
Uh, Marian?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Uh, any select board reports?
Yeah, I had one. I wanted to bring. I wanted to bring uh to the attention of board members and to the public. That we have to have an election on the Community Preservation Act. And I had received a some correspondence from. Another from from the Community Preservation Coalition. That came to me in my capacity, working for another town. But it explains. The election process that offers to review the proposed ballot question. And has various suggestions about how to. How to proceed with the. The um. Process of. Adopting the Community Preservation Act, a ballot, a favorable ballot question is necessary. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that that resource was was there. And that's why I wanted it as a comment here. So for people who are not on the board. They should know that it's there and. There's materials that are available, but hopefully we'll get attached to these minutes. And if it's of any use to the general public, then. Feel free to use it and for board members who may want to get involved and. In that uh. Election, uh, those materials are there for them to look at. That's it.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Uh, any other select board reports? Oh, Jackie, you had a comment? Again, if it's about a select board report, I can limit the discussion we can have. Just is more.
No, I I just wanted to comment um that on the Community Preservation Act that Heather White um is. Going to be working with me on the on the language for the question. For the November ballot. That's all.
Very good. Okay, any other select board reports? Marian?
Yeah, a question on uh what Paul said about the Community's uh Preservation Act materials. Yeah, they they look fine, but i- is there. A committee in town that's going to be coordinating the promotion or the advertising or the campaign for it? Before the uh before the election?
That's one of the recommendations that that citizens form a committee. But that's not our job to form that committee. It's up to citizens to form that committee. And there's important advantages. To the voters to have committees. Both pro and con. To articulate the issues, advance the. Enlightenment of the public on the issues both ways.
Yeah, absolutely.
Invitation in them those materials that such committees be formed.
Right, so uh. Well, my question really was a little bit different. Have such committees been formed? I think probably not. Maybe Steve knows.
I can answer that, yeah. N- as far as I'm aware, no committee has been formed yet. Actually, Jackie should know. Uh, I I I am sort of taking it on myself to try to get a committee forms. One of the issues is that. The campaign finance um severely restricts what um elected and appointed and town employees, uh officials, what what we can do um with um. Ballot questions, um, so it can't be a committee that's composed of a whole bunch of town. Related people, um, so that. Makes it a little bit more challenging. Um, so if anybody uh knows anybody who might be interested, let me know.
I'll join. Okay. Alright, um, anything else?
Ja- Jackie's got something else.
I felt left off before.
Yeah, I I just wanted to say that um I have been approached. Um, to get the paperwork for people to form a committee. Um, could be opposing it. They have not completely filed it, but there there is um discussion out there.
Okay, very good. Alright, any other select board reports? I'm not looking up. Okay. Uh, town ministry reports. Looks like we have a couple of them.
Yep, thanks, Eric. Uh, yeah, sort of the standing update that we'll we'll keep giving uh on the construction of Washington Maple Street. Uh, the roundabout. Um, so next week will be the big change. Next week on Monday. Believe at nine AM, um, the detour will go into put and into place, so that will be the. You know, the start of the the big impact as far as traffic detours around the construction. Um. If you've driven by recently, you've seen they've they've done a lot of work. Lynch is is really moving forward quickly. They've completed the underground drainage in the 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 library lawn area and they still have some fair amount of restoration to do there, but. They've backfilled enough to be able to pull the uh the uh safety fences away. They've excavated out a number of the. Traffic islands and medians and sidewalk and and done everything they could outside of traffic. Uh, in preparation for really hitting the ground running next week. Uh, on Wednesday. Um, after the the redways close on Wednesday, they they'll have a reclaim machine doing some some roadway uh work, so that's gonna make a big. That'll be a big change after Wednesday, after all the the roadways pulverized and made into gravel and and regraded, so some big changes to come next week. Uh, and the other update um that I wanted to share was that the. Boston Region MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Uh, voted last week, last Thursday, they voted on the Transportation Improvement Plan for FY uh. Including FY, the fiscal year for FY twenty-five, uh, for the federal fiscal year FY twenty-five. Um, and they did vote and and included the the design project and study for Sherburne, so there's nine hundred thousand dollars included. Uh, that will be accessible um this September uh for the town to hire consultant to help study. And 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 design the the split, um, the Route twenty-seven sixteen uh split through the village center, so that. Uh, is is now um approved by the MPO and. Will need to start planning on how to go about that. There'll be a fair amount of. Uh. Uh, discussions as far as what. Who the town would wanna hire for a consultant and how we'll wanna go about design development and public engagement, so. Lots more to come on that, but just wanted to let the board know that that money will be available this September.
Excellent, that's excellent. Before I recognize Marian, I do wanna say that, you know, I would like to be involved with that downtown design, the thing there, so to whatever it is, I'd like to get. Jump on that, whether it has this thing goes through, whether I'm on the border or not, I'd actually like to be involved um with that design. And I have thoughts on consultants, so I'd like to at least be um involved with that somewhat as well. Um, Maple Washington Street, the only thing I I wanted to comment on the Maple Washington is um. I don't think there's a visual meshel board boards on, the visual meshel V M B. I swear I had a mini stroke at some point. I can't pronounce things. V M B, is there one coming up saw when? There's like one on sixteen, right? Someone coming saw one. I wanna make sure people definitely get these warnings. I did see there was a um detour plan on the webpage. In fact, Jeannie pointed out for me. That's great that we have that. Um. Cause I know day one is just gonna be a cluster. It just is. And I want people to know, like, don't drive here on Monday. Just don't. You know? You're.
That's a great sign. Don't drive here.
It really is. It just, whatever it's gotta say. If any, if you gotta rent some from surrounding communities, I think we both know people that can. Borrow whatever it is, we gotta put V M Bs up, um, like.
There are some up. I'll I'll check Eric just to make sure that there's. They're up.
It should be up tomorrow, actually, because we have one workday left, don't we?
Exactly, tomorrow.
Already some up. I'm just don't, I don't recall when on saw one.
Yeah.
Diana and Jeremy can validate that I ran up to town hall to get my packet back, cause I was.
I've run more than three kilometers since twenty fifteen. I did the marathon. Um.
There it is.
Okay, uh. Any other comments on the town ministry report?
Uh, yeah, I had my my hand up at the, you know, you keep putting it down, Eric, or they programmed us, I think.
No, that wasn't me.
That wasn't you. I know it wasn't. No, uh, I wanted to just follow up on that MPO uh grant, which is great news, Jeremy. Uh, but you described it as a plan for the split. My understanding. Was that it was much broader than that. It was for, you know, the entire, you know, uh congestion area of sixteen twenty-seven, where it converges in town center, top to bottom. Uh, that's, that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I I guess the split with the with the Route twenty-seven to sixteen come together, so that where they come together, where they where they split. Um, the the study area would be from the the southern split. All the way up to Coolidge Street, um encompassing uh a number of the side roads as well. So yeah, it's 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 quite comprehensive in scope.
Yeah, for that money, we should get quite a a good plan, I hope.
Yeah, uh, nine hundred grand, does that take you up to eighty-five or all the way to bid documents?
As far as we can get.
Yeah, cause it, so just so we know, I'm gonna be vague here. It's being classified as an intersection and there's certain provisions, um, I can. Talk about some other point that make that a big advantage and um and I fully agree that this is uh should be classified as an intersection project. And that's why it's a split.
Disadvantages to be a quarter or a project, so.
Alright, okay, but we can use the money.
Either way, yes, yes.
Or what we need it for.
So Jimmy, being an intersection project, remind me, cause I I just did one. I should know. There's still a twenty-five percent hearing and an eighty-five percent hearing.
Yeah, the twenty-five percent public hearing, but that that's the only public hearing required from MASTIOT. I think we would need to do more public outreach than that. Um, that's the minimum.
Yes, of course. You know. No, MASTIOT hearing process is. And I I don't get it. I don't wanna poop with a tip thing. MASTIOT hearing process is a joke. They just put it on their webpage. That's it. It's like, you know, it's um. Barely advertised, barely attended, everything else like that. And we definitely have to do quite a bit of public outreach. And I'm, I want everyone to be prepared right now. Road jobs are the most polarizing thing you'll ever do in your life. I'm talking more than just like resurfacing. You're gonna get a lot of opinions and you're gonna satisfy twenty percent of them. I'm just telling you right now. This is my life. This is Jeremy's life. It's gonna, it's difficult to do these road jobs. It really is, and they're very polarizing. But in the end, it's worth it. It really is. Um. We'll see. Maybe it's uh not not quite the same here, but. We'll see. Alright, um, anything else? Alright, very good. Any motions relative to this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
And.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Um, Marian?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'll I'll eye this one definitely. Alright, thank you very much. And see you in a couple of weeks.
Ciao.
Bye.
Or at the landfill or at the transfer station this weekend.
Huh.